Review of the minutes from May ninth.
I only had one minor typo. Item two, second paragraph, second sentence. The board concluded at this time, I think it should be that day, David.
Okay.
It's just a minor typo.
Yep.
Yep.
I saw that too. Good catch.
And speaking of that, David did prepare a letter for me. And one of the things that I added to the letter was something to the effect of whether alcohol was going to be served or something. And I don't know whether we want to add that to our minutes in terms of the items that put on the letter. But we could do that after plans for night skiing and then.
Yeah, I think part of the issue is that.
Because that was really what the nexus for what brought our concerns.
That's right, yep. They do have a, an app, the, the, the folks that are going to run the concession stand have an application into the state liquor commission.
Right.
For their license, so that is a part of it as well as just it's been many, many years since anything was looked at. The, the select board had a very constructive meeting with two of the principals of the skiway and the college earlier this week. And we're going to continue that conversation, but.
Oh, that's great.
I still think this would, it'd be really helpful to look at the plans, what they, what was approved, what they're doing now. And just see how this board feels about possibly a change of use or an expansion of uses or what's going on.
Yeah, because as you said, it's been a lot of years.
Well, let's make, I'm really interested to hear this. Let's finish the minutes.
Sure. So.
So I would, I would second any wording that you say.
So David, what, what can we write there to amend this?
You know, did the letter, you know, I had a listing of things and I just added alcohol service as items. I would just add alcohol service as, you know, after plans for night skiing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good. Any other, any other items that changes? Good. I accept a motion to, or I entertain a motion to.
I'll move it, accept the minutes as amended.
And seconded by Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Actually, I can't vote, can I?
No. There's only two of you here.
Well, three.
Three, yeah.
Sorry.
So actually, you could designate me and Hebe to be members for any.
Sure.
That's, that's.
That's why we're here.
Could we designate you so that you felt like you, you, you earned your keep tonight?
Real, real members.
Yeah.
Great.
Great. So that was unanimously accepted. Thank you.
So you're designating both Hebe and Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, let's just, we could carry on a little bit. Continue the discussion about the skiway. As, as I mentioned, David prepared a letter and that went out Tuesday, I think.
Thank you. Did you share that with the board?
I did not.
That was, I, I can.
Just.
Sure.
For context and interest.
And any, yeah, anything else, Judy, that you can tell us from the select board's meeting?
I think that's sort of it at this time. We still felt it was good for the planning board to go forward. We're going to continue discussions. There've been some past issues that have come and gone and come back again. And also, there've been some agreements that are, you know, we're in maybe the third generation of people working at the skiway. That the agreements were 20 years ago.
Sure.
So we found at least one or two of those that we shared with them. And we're going to try and, we'll send a follow-up letter to them. They were actually very gracious and very, we spent close to two hours here.
Wow.
Meeting, so that was very good, very productive.
Well, they should.
Yeah.
So what the?
Was Sean there?
Sean was here.
Yeah.
Scott was here as the road agent, because we did have road issues and curving issues and other things. And Sean certainly has some issues, so.
It was it? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I, I talked to Mark Schiffman. I, we had sort of dinner. I, anyway, we got into different discussions and he knows a lot about the skiway. I mean, you know, he coaches there and he, and so it was interesting what he was saying. And one of the things he was saying, we talked about parking. And he said that it's true, there are a few times a year when they have big races, there are many times a year, the parking lot isn't big enough.
No, that's true.
It's full. He said, one thing that might help is that if you had somebody there parking cars, they could fit more in. But when the parking lot's full.
It's unmarked.
Then people just park in the road. So, I mean, that's going to be an issue, obviously.
Well, that is an issue and that is a big issue.
And he didn't think they could expand parking.
I, I don't know about that.
Yeah, that was his opinion, that there wasn't any room to expand it.
Yeah, there, and this is just me talking, this is not the select board talking. But if the parking lot were paved and were striped, you would fit more cars in. And if there was perhaps a parking attendant, they could maybe funnel people a little more closely than.
Yeah, that's what Mark was saying too.
But, you know, those are issues we talked about. Certainly, the skiway has to look at what they can do reasonably.
Right, right.
But if parking in the road is not workable.
Right.
It destroys the road, it destroys the culverts or the ditches.
Right.
It's not legal. You can't park in a roadway.
Right.
And it creates huge issues for pedestrians and for other cars. So I think a lot of people don't realize that's a through road. It goes someplace.
Yeah, well, that's another thing. Mark, Mark was talking about it. He, he agreed that it was a problem, because people just, a lot of people, he felt, that ski there don't even realize that's a road.
Oh, yeah.
They just walk, they think it's part of the skiway. They just walk right across.
Right. So, so you say it was a fairly congenial meeting?
It was.
Yeah. I mean, you're just talking at the start and.
We, we, yeah. And we had sent some letters in the past and felt it was time to get together. No, I, I was impressed, because I've met with the college in other areas. And not had such a nice reception. So that was very positive.
Good. So we can.
I think, yeah. Think if you want to look at what you had for paperwork, if you want to take, you know, make arrangements, David made arrangements to go up, whatever. I just think it's time to look at it. We know that they've done some stuff, they're doing some internal changes. It may not rise to the level of a change. And yet initially, I think, when the new lodge was built, they talked about the college would man a cafeteria in style. Kind of pick up food service with college employees. And that's certainly different now. It's going to be, well, they want it to be wine and liquor and a franchise that comes in.
All separate.
And makes the food and, yeah.
Would there be, the food service during the day and then the wine and liquor after hours or?
I don't have that piece of information. I would not want to.
So we will find out.
Yeah.
Let's just look at it right there.
We'll talk, you know. Yeah. Yeah. Now, Judy, I, I shouldn't know there, I forget. Does the college pay the town any taxes at all?
It does.
It does.
Well, it, it does some of the property, at this point, 20% is taxable, but 80% is not. That also is going to get looked at again.
So, so they pay on land only, not the lodge or 20% of the lodge too?
I don't know. I can't answer whether or not some of the lodges is taxable or not. Several years ago, there was a very important decision that had to do with St. Paul's school. And I believe it went to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. And they came up with a formula of what in, in a school or a college or a university, what's taxable and what's not and how it applies. And I think that's going to be something that we will look at in terms of where they are now.
Right.
And I know the assessor's been out there.
Yeah, because I mean, I would assume the lodge would be assessed at a million dollars.
Oh, no, three or four, I think.
Really? Yeah, well, that's.
But it was three something when they built it, 99?
That's true, yeah, it cost something, yeah.
But, but if, I'm not the assessor and I'm certainly not a pro at this. But it depends on college use and non-use.
Hanover's got that mixed formula for dormitories and schoolroom, but then there's.
Dormitories, academic.
Then there's places that make money and.
That's right. It's, it's a headache.
Yeah.
But I think we're going to head into that headache on my side of the street.
It would be nice to preserve the positive relationship with the skiway, because it is awfully nice that all the kids can ski there.
I agree.
And.
Yeah, it's great.
Our understanding is from day one, when the land was either given or offered to the college, the stipulation was that the Lime residence children could ski there. We haven't found that in writing yet, which is always an issue.
Except in the 50s, was it the 50s?
Yes, it was the 50s.
Yeah.
David, in terms of our purview, is, are, is there a, are there a set of, or several sets of, several generations of approved site plans and findings of fact and that sort of thing?
There is, it'll be. A task to pull it all together. It's kind of spread out over folders this wide in the, the back room.
It'd be a powerful, powerful document.
Yeah, well, that's my intent, to pull that from, you know, pull off a planning board, you know, anything they've provided for. There've been several site plans for individual projects since I've been here, but nothing for the lodge. So, and I'm not sure when the planning board started doing site plans.
I'm not sure about that, but the lodge, I think they were doing it by then, because that was 1999.
Yep.
And.
So, you know, it's going to be one of my tasks to go back there, pull the, all the folders.
Yeah, because I think that, that's going to be crucial for us to make a determination as to whether or not.
Whether it's change.
Whether it's change, yeah.
You could probably find it.
Change from what?
Craft county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've asked Dean to look for that.
It's, I mean, it's all searchable online.
It doesn't seem to be here.
I know. If, I mean, it's just the transfer in, registered in April.
Right, no, I understand.
And that's all, all microfashioned and now it's online, it's searchable. But, yeah.
What, what are you referring to?
The deed.
The deed for when the land was transferred.
Oh, back in the 50s or whatever it was.
Where did it come from? Who?
That would be, that would be part of that information.
Yep. It would be, but my understanding was it was a gift from a local family.
Is this letter then, does this become part of the record, just from my understanding of how this goes?
I will, it will be part of the eventual site plan, that will be.
This, or does it become part of the minutes, no?
No, there was no, it was not, the minutes for you is discuss what to put in the letter.
You can attach it to the minutes if you want.
I mean, I, I don't know that every single correspondence that we put out wants to be attached to minutes per.
I, I don't agree with doing that either, but that's the board's purview.
But I think it certainly should be in the, in the project file.
Oh, yeah, it will be.
Do you, I mean, do things get filed under map and tax law?
Yes.
Remember?
So what'll happen is when the board, you know, because I would consider this an action of the board. So I will have a file for this particular action. The, the letter is going to be the, the first thing that goes in that file. And then if I pull out all of the old documents, that'll go in the file. This is, knowing that this is the, all the information provided to the board for that action. And then anything they provide will then.
Is there anything?
Will add another two inches of paperwork to the file.
It becomes one-stop shopping, which is always nice.
Yeah, so anything about the skiway.
The, the hard part is that, is people come in and look at the, you know, it's a public record. They start looking through and they start adjusting things. And then after a few years, everything's kind of out of order and you have to go back in and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, that happens. You, you can sit with them and help manage it or put it back in order right away, because you're right, it does get.
Right. And you sent us some minutes, I think, because I lived in the, I had minutes from the DBA.
Right, I had sent you some minutes. And those will be part of the.
Yeah.
Those will be included in what I, I'll provide those again as part of the, the record.
Should be.
Yeah.
Have it, yeah.
In 2003, they, they played with that one.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That was. Good.
So I guess we are probably back on the housing, housing issue. And one of our, our leaders on this is not here tonight, so.
Is this, I'm just, oh, I know, where do I keep this? Is this an ongoing?
That will be on the 13th of June, so.
So we should be looking at that prior to our June 13.
Shut things around. Great.
And I just want to make sure I'm going to be here.
Orange fingers. Oh, right.
June 13, yeah, I'm here. Oh, wait. Use wrong year. This is a two-year book. Yeah. I'm here.
Yes. It's, I, you got me scared that, that I had the date wrong.
No, you're, you're good.
It's Thursday.
Yep. So, you know, we were talking about visions and that leading to actions last time. And I think Nat had volunteered to look at, at perhaps some housing videos, some webinar or something out there. Which, Tim, you say you've talked to him.
Well, I talked to him, and he said he was going to do it before he left.
Yeah.
But I don't, because he was going to do it that day, try to do it that day. He didn't send it to me, so maybe he didn't find, I don't know.
But I, I guess that it does, you know, kind of, I, I think we are sort of heading towards having some sort of a public hearing slash informational session in, you know, once kids are back in school in September. And, yeah, I'm interested in learning who or how we might tailor that so that we can get some, some useful information. And I, I think certainly, we all recognize that we don't have public water in the sewer. So, you know, what happens in other communities probably can't happen here in Lime. And, you know, I, I think, as we look at some of the, our neighbors, you know, I mentioned to David when I came in, I said, what would happen if somebody proposed 300 units in the town of Lime? And.
There would be no way.
And the, the answer is, the septic system would probably be overwhelming.
Yeah. Although I, I do want to say that, you know, I think that, yes, a 300-unit development is like.
Not.
Off the table, just as a practical matter.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not necessarily our, our responsibility to judge a development based on whether the septic system can go in.
Well, absolutely it is. It's a multi-dual.
Well, okay, so let me, let me finish, let me finish. And maybe I'm wrong, but let, my, it's my, my thought that if the applicant brings in a state-proved septic system, that, that, that's critical, obviously, for our judgment. I mean, we, we've got to know where this stuff is going to go. But if, if engineers sign off on it, and it, I mean, 300 units is preposterous. But a, a big system, if, if there can be an approved system, that allows us to check off that box to say, okay, you've met that criteria, criterion, so what are the, do you meet the others? So I just want to say, is critical the previous state-proved system, but that it's not our, it's not up to us to say whether it can be done. And of course, the other side of it is, can it be done economically? But the applicant is going to have determined that ahead of time. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
But there may be, with site plan review, there may be other things that the board would say, well, it's, you know, it doesn't work for that other reason.
Absolutely.
Other than the septic system, you know, even though they could do a septic system, there might be a lot of.
I mean, if they wanted to develop 300, 300 units out on the far end of Dorchester Road, you might say, well, you know, traffic is going to be a problem. Or, you know, there's other problems.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there are lots of things that are absolutely in the town's interest to regulate and to ask. But.
It's not us, we don't need to make judgments about whether things are affordable or not.
Well, yes.
Right. And I guess I, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure. I, I was, you know, I think you probably know the town I'm talking about that was in the paper, you know.
Hartford.
No, well, not today, but Enfield, which I.
Oh, that one, there's another one going in on Hickory Ridge and.
In Hartford.
Off Sikes Avenue.
Yeah.
That's 250.
But, yeah, I, I think that that would be, I think the townspeople would be in shock and if anything like that were.
Do you know, I mean, 300 units.
Be proposed.
In a town of 800 units.
Yeah.
Would be, would be hard to swallow.
Yeah.
I, I.
I'm not arguing about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, so we had to build a new $50 million school.
Did, did, David, did you have a chance to go back and look at, you were going to look at building permits for 2010 to 2024? Give us some idea of how many had actually, oh, sweet.
That's the, the numbers.
Listen, I love data.
Yeah, so I did new dwellings and then I did conversions and ADUs. About, you know, just number per year. And I did note, in 2020, there was a six units, but five of those were Ray Clark's.
One building.
Right. It's a new unit, though.
It's a new unit, but I figured it's sometimes nice to know why there's a bump.
Yep.
29 plus.
Yep. Plus five.
Plus five.
We had no ADUs before 2021.
I did not see any. And I went through, ADUs are not easily in my database tracked. I don't, because a lot of times it's done with some other renovations and, so I have to go through the notes section to see what exactly was approved. I, I didn't find any before, let's say, 2020.
So the, the keys, was it the keys to the valley, valley that was coming up with 55 units as being the burden for Lime by 2030?
Well, that was the, that was the question. There was, it seems like there are two different.
Yeah.
Reports out there. One is the keys to the valley, which I didn't track down. The other is the, the upper valley Lake Sunapee Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And the latter, I, I did get a page from that. And I'm already in through my sheets here.
Maybe you come with 11, where'd she get 11? She had 11.
She was the difference between 55 units and this other number, by, that we need 11 more by 2030. And I, I, I think that might be a little bit of an underestimate, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I think she started out with a high, a lower base number that she was subtracting the new dwelling units from.
Right.
Yeah, so how did they come up with those numbers?
Definitely.
What do they, what do, you know, what do those numbers mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's essentially a population and census study, a projection, you know.
Based on the, on the population of Lime? Or based on each town, the population?
It's looking at the upper valley as a, as a more of a whole.
Is there?
And then looking at the growth in population and then what the burden for each town for affordable housing would be, as, as well as just general housing.
Is there not a way to go back through, maybe you have to manually go through the cards for each property and see which properties before 2010 had accessory dwelling units?
I couldn't.
That might be an interesting number, because there may be more by now.
That was one of the reasons I wanted to do a vision on my machine this year, was so that I could do a better job of.
But you could pop across the aisle there and.
Yeah, it's.
Less convenient, but.
Far less convenient.
Still accessible.
Is it a, is it a data field?
I, I need to.
In the CAMA data?
I, I would need to look, there are a large number of tables and so.
It should be, because your, your tax card would have your.
Right.
Yep.
Principal building and then accessory buildings, whether it's a dwelling or a garage or a barn or a sugar house.
Yep.
So it should come up somehow.
Yeah, but just as a matter of finding, basically, I'd have to pull a card that has an accessory dwelling unit on, which is easy enough to find. And then try to track back from the card where it's storing that information.
What's it called in vision? You mean, what the field's called?
Yeah, which, which table and what field did Rich take? And then.
So Rich, did, did you, so you say there are two.
Yes.
Two studies that have different numbers.
So there's the, let me get the name right, the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And that looks like this. Printed out the front page and it's 300 and some dot pages of pretty dense stuff. I can certainly send a, a link to David and he can get it out.
And what's the date, kind of?
This is, this is a 2023. I don't have any, any more fine details on it. This is, although this is an assessment for 2023, so it probably came out at the beginning of this year. I don't know that for sure. This is the, this table here is on page 69. And it says that Lime, so this table is targets for new housing production. Lime needs 52 by 2025, 98 by 2030, 128 by 2035, and 145 by 2040. So.
It's much more aggressive.
This is very much more aggressive.
And so that's all based on population?
Yeah.
Of, of each town, so each town.
No, here's again.
Yes, I'll say that, it's your turn to say that to me, right?
There you go.
I always say to Judy.
Say that number again.
So it, so it's 20, I'll start with the years, 2025, 30, 35, and 40. And the numbers are 52 and 98, and then 120 and 145. And.
I think a little to that would be really, I'd love to read the methodology of mine.
Yes, and so I have them, they're printed, you know, page 64 here. It talks about the future housing needs and the fair share. And it goes through their methodology. They talk about the projected household growth and then the workforce needs. And they say, you know, there's just a whole flock of people that we want to live here, that we want to be available to do the things we need. You know? I.
So they figure out a figure for the whole upper valley and then they divide the towns up by population.
I think that's what they did, I mean.
But then in one town, like say Lebanon puts in 200 extra, then it would take away from other towns.
It could.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, Lebanon. It could, um, you know, but, you know, Lebanon, for example, uh, Lebanon by twenty twenty five was four hundred fifty two and by twenty forty was twelve hundred and change. So, um, you know, Lebanon's going gangbusters right now. But they may not, I mean, they're putting in two hundred and, I mean, I don't know the real numbers.
Do you have Enfield numbers just out?
I, indeed, a hundred forty nine, so then, again, the four years, a hundred forty nine, two eighty, three sixty four, four thirteen.
So they're, they're pretty much on track. I think that what we should do is understand the methodology of this and then decide if there are pieces of it that we can try to respect within, keeping within the spirit of what we want here. Because I think it's important to have external validation for the decisions that we try to make, that, that they're grounded in some kind of understanding. And I think that we've gotten a little bit more yimby now in the last ten years and that, that we want to be respectful of social responsibilities for the fact that, you know, leave them tavern closed because they couldn't get workers, you know, that sort of, those kind of, we need, we need people.
Right.
To, to do the things here.
And how long are you waiting for your medical procedures? A big house.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more people that come, the longer you wait, so.
Well, but if there are young people that are workers, you know, that, that begins to eat away at it and, and, you know, why, why do we have so many people that are, oh, what are they called? I'm, I'm blanking, nurses that come.
Traveling.
Traveling nurses, there we go, thank you. Why can't they live here?
Well, a lot of them don't want to live here. And a lot of nurses, traditionally, that would have been a part of the community, aren't nurses. People don't want to go into that. So it's more complex. I'm not downgrading the housing issue, but it's more complex than just.
This is an incredibly complex problem. And, and even if we were to say, ah, Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission is absolutely right and Lime should have a hundred and forty five new homes in the next fifteen years, I would wager that that plan would not fly with the voters of Lime. And so we need to be really, I mean, I, as much as I like to promote housing, I am very cognizant of the fact that if you go too fast, it's not gonna get anywhere, so. So how do we resolve this? I mean, I, I guess it would be really nice to ask Vicky how to reconcile her number, which is the keys to the valley report, and, and this report, which is, you know, from the, from our regional planning commission. We, we pay those guys some amount of money to, to do this work, so.
Yeah, and I think also, you know, as Hebe said, you know, what is the methodology? And can we really subscribe to, um, to their methodology? I mean, just because somebody says that's what it should be, doesn't mean that it, that we agree with it.
Yeah, it's a suggestion, like, it's always suggested, yeah.
And, and, you know, to, to look at, you know, what has traditionally happened in town and to then propose something that's gonna deviate substantially from that, I think, well, in, in some folks' minds would diminish the, the value and the attractiveness of the community that they are.
I think, I think, I think yes and, Rich, that, you know, the original lot sizes in the Common District, for example, were, I mean, it's now a one acre minimum, and that's not really a downtown size, you know?
Yeah.
The old size, they're about a third of an acre is really what most of the plots downtown are. And so if we, if we just think about, you know, more of a village feel, would not be hurt by reducing the dimensional controls.
Right, yeah, I think it's called infill.
Yes, exactly.
I was reading an article about that, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
A lot of towns have infilled.
No, but I think, I think what, these are two separate things that you're saying. Infill, clearly, yes, if somebody wants to do a conversion or somebody wants to do a, um, um, an accessory dwelling unit, that's a, that's a good thing. But I, what I think I hear Hebe saying is that, that traditionally, in the Lime Common District, lots are a lot smaller than an acre. I mean, they're all, all those lots around the Common, not all, certainly Ray Clark's is bigger, but most of those lots around the Common are considerably smaller than an acre. That's been our traditional development pattern, and then the ordinance came through.
A lot of them go down behind and around.
Yeah, no, about half of them are smaller than an acre.
Interesting.
Yeah, um, and so the ordinance came through, said they have to be an acre, which means that you can't build them closer.
And you can't infill.
And it's, and it's hard to, you, you couldn't possibly subdivide to do infill.
And then the lot coverage requirements also keep you from being able to do some of that infill.
Right, but realistically, around the Common, I mean, the backside of the Common, I don't think anybody's gonna put, those houses are close together, so they wouldn't do anything anyway. I mean, you know, we could think about the Sam Pitt and we could think about Earl's, you know, Greenmount Studios building, but right around the Common, it's probably pretty well.
Well, just south of the school, there's some backland there.
Oh, true.
Nancy Grandin's house is actually two lots.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah, it goes back and it goes all the way back down behind, so, you know. And I'm not trying to say anything prescriptive, but for my thought process to, I, if I think of them, what would it take to be, make it possible for that to be, you know, a multi-unit place? And that would still be well within keeping of the spirit of the village.
You mean Nancy's house?
Nancy's house and then another building on that lot, you know, with multiple.
And that, that's frankly where we're, you know, where we're trying to, I think we're wanting to try to direct.
Right.
Some of the newer housing so that people can walk to the school and to the store and the bookstores.
What we'd take, dimensional restrictions and parking perhaps, you know, would, would be some of the things. And, um, another project would be something like Stacy, what's, who, where John, John Bigelow lives.
Oh, right, there he is.
That, that big old barn. What would it take to make, be able to have that be, like, five or six units?
There's a great barn in Hanover that was, I think, was put into four units, I can't really remember, but.
It's called the Fars.
The Fars?
Yes, yeah, and it really was great. The barn looks like a barn.
Exactly, exactly. There's one out on Greensboro Road, there's two, two sides of Greensboro Road, there's, one's a big, and I.
I think that's.
One perhaps is a long time.
But, you know, and then, so, so that, you know, within keeping of the spirit of the small townness. But it would still let us, you know, get a bunch more places. And I think, I don't know if it passed the legislature to allow two eighty years.
I think they were voting on it today.
Two eighty, only two eighty years.
And I don't know how the vote came out.
I haven't heard.
Yeah.
It was, they, it was recommended to go to a study committee and then they snuck it in by attaching it to some completely other irrelevant bills. And with the original language unchanged, so I don't know, I haven't heard back or heard of anymore.
And then the parking was also, you know, that.
Right, allowing one instead of, one instead of two.
Allowing one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think the town still have, I mean, is required, do you only have one? I think the town still can, can change that, I mean, if it.
I think the town can set more restrictive parking, but not less, is what the, the town, the state sets a limit. You, you have to have at least one, is.
Right, that's what they're saying, yeah.
But, but you could have two.
Right.
So I just kind of clicked around on the, the parcel map for the Lime Common and there, um, the ones on the south side of the Common are running, for the most part, you know, three, four acres or more. The ones on the north side, as you're going out, the East Effer Road are running about half an acre.
Yeah.
And then, you know, there's some much larger ones, of course.
Of course, right.
And there are a couple of smaller ones. The only I would worry about with smaller lots is finding room for a septic.
Well, there again, that, this is my point, that, yes, that may actually prevent you from doing it, but if you can get a state engineer to sign off on a legal.
I mean, the, the place at the bottom of my driveway is a third of an acre. They've got a septic and two, two dwelling units on it. It is the, the grandfather of all non-conforming laws.
And, you know, the, the other issue will be that anything under five acres for subdivision has to go through a DES subdivision approval also, so, you know, that will.
So really?
Yep, okay, yeah.
But some of those, those smaller lots could have, I don't know, I'm not that familiar with the condo regulations, but they could either condominiumize with a small unit or do an accessory dwelling unit, which provides, this doesn't say it has to be a standalone house, it just needs to be some kind of unit for living that's adequate. So, and that goes back to the infill, which at least in Hanover initially made, there was a lot of pushback for anything, but those kind of less, um, obtrusive or less violation of what had been a standard seemed to meet with approval and consensus, it's sort of a soft entry.
Well, the town ran water and sewer out Greensboro Road specifically to encourage development there. So then when people said, oh, no, 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 it's like, but really, that was the plan.
It's right there.
It's the plan.
David, do we still require a backup system for septic? And I remember years back, if you were doing a septic on your lot, you had to have enough room for a backup.
No, because a lot of times, um, you have septic systems that are built right on top of the old ones.
Okay, because years ago, we used to say.
Yeah, you let me show you had room.
Room for a replacement. So we don't do that.
Yeah, that's, that's not, it might be, the state may require, but we don't. Um, we actually, the zoning dropped all the requirements for the, uh, for septics other than setbacks, to let the state kind of have control of that, because there's trying to.
Probably makes much more sense.
Yeah, trying to keep up with the standards and stuff.
Right, the septic is, yeah, the, the technology changes very rapidly. And so the, it's my understanding anyway, that that was, that's the reason it was dropped out of the zoning was to, it was just too hard to constantly have to change the zoning to.
Right, it makes sense, yeah.
So how do we get to, if we wanted to have a discussion about the methodology?
We don't have to do our homework.
How do we get to that? It, it feels to me like maybe one of us could at least start the ball on that and then we could take a look at that. I don't know whether, Rich, you feel like you'd want to do that or.
Share the links for both of those studies and we could.
Right, I don't know that I have the, the keys, well, I guess the keys to the valley, I, I skimmed the keys to the valley and didn't see a way to get to the number that Vicky said, so. I mean, I guess, David, maybe you could ask Vicky to give us an overview of how she got to that number and what she was using. And I'm happy to summarize the methodology and I'll send, I'll send you, David, the link to the, um, to the regional housing needs assessment here.
I think we should all read it, just that we have some.
There are three hundred and pages.
Not all of it.
I'll, I'll, I'll send the Cliff Notes, I'll link.
You can read that, but just the, you know, so we get comfortable with the line.
If you could maybe tell us, read page twenty to thirty or something.
Yeah, exactly, no, it's, uh, it's page sixty four.
Yeah.
I started looking at it, but I don't, so do they explain in there their methodology? Do they just explain exactly how they came up with it?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I, I, I will go through and see if I can summarize it. I like to think of myself as a decent teacher, so if I can summarize, I can send it to you.
If you can explain it to the rest of us, then you've really accomplished.
Then I will pass myself, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, because they pulled those numbers out of somewhere, I'd say.
Sure.
Oh, absolutely.
Where it is down in the air.
Oh, yeah.
Think they're making stuff up.
I hope not.
Don't we pay them money? So, um, I'd be happy to do that.
How does, how does our, uh, communication with the regional planning commission happen? I mean, is this a, um, select board?
We have a representative.
Is that Bill Malcolm?
Bill Malcolm.
Right.
And he tries to pass forward anything, but, you know, if we need something from them, I can contact the, the folks there and say, can you do this for us and they'll give you a price?
And we pay them money.
They pay dues.
The town pays them.
I mean, I wonder if Bill would be a resource that we could ask him, do, do you understand the, where they came up with these numbers or?
I don't know if he, is that intimate with them or not, yeah.
But they should be able to tell you that, I mean, that's not gonna cost them money to inquire.
Right.
And see how they.
Well, if it's not well documented in the publication.
Right, if it's not, I think they should be able to tell them.
Right.
Olivia should be, or.
Yeah.
Olivia.
Victoria.
Last name, yes, starts with U, but I don't.
Yeah.
Right.
What else do we want, can we accomplish tonight?
Referring back to the goals, I mean, if we start thinking about the, the pieces that we're trying to eat the elephant one bite at a time.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we started with, how many do we think we need? And then these goal one, you know, there's some strategies to consider. And I think we are thinking about those. I mean, one, one place to focus is perhaps on, is it table four one and five one? That have the allowed usage, uses and.
Four one is the, the allowed usage and five one are the dimensional controls.
Right, right, and I think, Rich, we kind of agreed that those are the two places that, um, some relaxation without changing the spirit could allow for. I mean, maybe that would be homework as well, to think about, think about those two chapters or table and those chapters and think about what things, because, I mean, it's kind of funny that there's a, a list of allowed uses. I mean, there's, there's no way in our current environment you could think of every possible small business, commercial, professional application that could be on that list. I mean, I think, I was looking at it the other day, does it have like shoe repair or something? It's like, is one of the allowed uses? And it's, I, I think one of the things to think about is, um, perhaps coming up with FTEs for employment, you know, how many people could be employed by a, a business or is it a cottage industry or, you know?
So Hebe, we're saying if, if it's not listed under business, then it can't be there.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, you know, the, the one thing that I've been vaguely amused by is that skiing facilities are not allowed in rural districts. And yet, it would not be outrageous for a farm lodge to set up cross-country ski trails. And would that be an impermissible use of, of the land?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, but it says right there, it's not allowed.
I'm not sure it's a facility if you just set up trails, but that would be something that we'd have to consider.
Yeah, if you had a lodge that you were.
Yeah, if you build a lodge.
Had something more like a Craftsbury.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm on the trails.
I used to work at an inn down in Ridge that had cross-country ski trails and that was one of their draws for the winter time, was to bring people in and they had ski rental.
Yeah, see, but then you're getting closer to a facility, but.
Yeah, exactly.
But maybe some definitional changes would be helpful.
Well, I mean, the, the definition of skiing facilities is, um, basically everything that a ski facility might want to do, food service, childcare, uh, outfiling, or skiing.
Right.
Uh, ski lifts, gear services, shelters, maintenance buildings.
So you have a different principle on your land, principal use, and then you're gonna cut some trails through. principal on your land, principal use, and then you're gonna cut some trails through. You might be able to argue that that's not a facility, and you're fortunate to allow it as accessory to the principal use.
And, and so the question I would ask, and why would we say that ski facilities are not allowed in the rural district? I mean, you could say this is a fine review process to say you've got a business. No, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think it is definitely, I mean, they were probably thinking that they didn't want another skiway the same size as Dartmouth in the rural district.
Which would be challenging.
Yeah, which would be very challenging.
You could put it in, if, I mean, given the problems we have with the one we have, then you're just increasing
Right.
other issues, but, you know, you can look at definitional changes, I think you have to, again, take small steps to get to where you're going, but then there have to be caps, and it's hard to write these documents with a, a perfect list. And you certainly don't wanna go to, it's hard to build a negative and say, you can do anything unless it's prohibited, because then your provision list either is way too long, or it's way too constructive, so it's, you have to, as you know, I think you've experienced.
I've been long enough to know all of the, yes, so, yeah.
So I'll just be quiet.
But, I mean, my, my, my thought process is just that a few minor changes would loosen things up so that we could get, you know.
Yeah, I mean, one thing.
In the other fifteen years, we might have another forty or fifty units in town, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing, and we've talked about this prior, is, is increasing the size of the ADEO from seven hundred fifty-two, that, that would be something that would help.
Absolutely, and perhaps allow for some kind of cluster housing to think about. Do we want to allow a cluster of tiny houses, or that kind of thing?
Yeah, which I think is, is good, and less objectionable than other, other ways to do it.
Don't chop up the wilderness, keep it all compacted.
Right.
And, Rich, to answer your question, yes, you could put in ski trails at Lockline Lodge without a problem. Because there, it would, it is considered part of the outdoor recreation activity, which is allowed.
Ah.
So, but if we, and I guess we have an existing restaurant that if we kept that open.
Get your liquor license.
Hey!
Well, we have a sports bar.
Walking right down there.
No, 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 I, I gotta step away from the lodge here, but that, thank you, that's an interesting.
I mean, but the, the liquor license would be great for all the ice fishermen on boat, coming across.
Oh, man.
Oh, geez. Then you might be able to get the state crosswalk there.
And if you get some of the snowmobile trails.
Get, get a franchise for a bar of our own. That's that women's sports bar that's gotten very, it lines out the door in Minneapolis, it's.
Is that right?
It's hilarious, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm tired, so I'm aggressive.
I diverted us away too, so.
So four-one and five-one, that's a good idea. So if we look at the quick, I'm trying to get us out of here so that it's, it's an hour.
Sure.
That's a nice meeting length.
I think that's a great.
It is. So our homework would be to review, so that we are familiar with the language, Rich is gonna summarize, and then we both, we all look at chapters four and five of the zoning, and think about tweaks that we could find acceptable, and easy, easy to persuade people of, that might be some easy wins for a change in the next year, because I think if we really get in-depth, you know, try to do everything all at once, and we're just
You won't be able to.
And we'll just make ourselves crazy by October.
Yeah.
We'd like to be, like, a little bit more on point than.
Realistic.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I would throw in, if you're looking at chapter four, look at four-four-six conversions.
Okay.
I think, um, conversions are something, um.
Yeah.
Then. I think people would not wholly object to converting some of the older buildings and, and to housing, and, you know, just even the fact that, you know, if it's, uh, it has to have wiring, heating, and plumbing, sanitary facilities. Um, if it doesn't have that, then you can only convert it to one unit, and then have to wait five years.
That seems counter.
And, and I think, um.
That's the thing I was thinking about for Bigelow's barn.
Right, um, that's, you know, and I understand, you know, the, the issue was that they didn't want people to build a brand-new building, huge building, and say, oh, wait, now I'm gonna convert it.
Right.
So, um, you know, you may wanna look at new construction versus existing.
But you could also, in that case, you could install what you need in the barn, and then a year later, come back and look for your units.
Yes, not have to wait the five years is the key.
Right.
And, and then the point, I think.
But I think David's right about the new, not building a barn.
Right, but the other, the other point was, I think, um, Rusty was saying that if he wanted to build, you know, this little thing he's trying to do here, you can't build something as an office. And, you know, my neighbor is finishing her psychiatric residency and wants to have an office, but you can't build, a, a new, a new office can't be built. A conversion can be an office, and that seems like.
If your neighbor is doing it in her house, then she is allowed.
She's, wouldn't want to be doing it in her house, 'cause this is the place with the two units on a third of an acre.
They've already got more, more going on there that.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Is her septic system on the same side of the road, or is it, uh, across the street?
It's all right there.
Yeah, all right there.
It's all right there.
So they don't own the cross the street, or that's a separate lot?
Cross the street is Crossroads Academy.
Really? Right dead set across from street, huh?
Right, right to the corner, I don't know if you know where my driveway comes down. That's the corner essentially of the Crossroads Academy land. It goes, um, all the way back, and then it becomes conserv, the other part is conservation.
Okay.
But the Crossroads was keeping that field, 'cause they thought, back in the dark time, the dark ages, when they were planning this, they were, might wanna put faculty housing in.
Yeah.
Didn't happen, but.
Interesting. Okay.
Okay, well, let's, yeah, well, look at this.
I, I think we should maybe consider an adjournment.
You happy?
I would, yeah, I'd so moved.
For a second.
Awesome.
Great.
Great.
So our next meeting is the thirteenth, is that right, David?
Yes, I believe that is the.
Fourth?
'Cause we have five weeks, and.
Yeah, I think, I'm looking at my calendar.